Good evening. It's Tuesday, June 17th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. This is the City of Franklin Common Council. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Alderman Pecorelli.
Here.
Alderwoman Eichmann.
Here.
Alderman Assam.
Here.
Alderwoman Day.
Here.
Alderman Salus.
Here.
Alderman Craig.
Aye.
And then me.
Oh, Mayor Nelson.
Here. Please rise from the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So next, we will go into citizen comments period. And I'll read this verbatim as I do every meeting. Anybody who's got any questions, there's a laminated copy attached to the podium, as well as copies off to the side. City of Franklin Meeting Rules of Decorum for Attendees and Participants. For those attending City of Franklin meetings: Number one, respectful and orderly conduct is expected at all times. Two, disruptive or unruly behavior, including elements of clapping, verbal disruption, signs, and outbursts, will not be tolerated. For those wishing to speak during City of Franklin meetings, approach the microphone when the chair opens the floor for citizen comments. Two, state your name and address for the record. Three, address your comments to the Common Council Board Commission Committee only. Four, limit your comments to three minutes or less. I will be the timekeeper. Five, no endorsement or electioneering are allowed. Six, speakers shall refrain from presenting unduly repetitious, offensive, threatening, slanderous, defamatory, or obscene remarks. Seven, persons wishing to speak as a spokesperson on behalf of a neighborhood, subdivision, homeowners, condominium, or business association or similar group with common interests shall demonstrate their qualifications to do so according to City of Franklin Resolution Number 2007-6227 before speaking on the Batby's behalf. Eight questions may be answered immediately by the chair or referred to city staff for a future reply in a timely manner. Those not adhering to these rules of decorum for attendees and participants will be asked to leave or will be removed from the meeting if necessary. With that said, I'm the timekeeper. It is now open. Anybody who's going to speak, come to the podium. Joy may want to tap to see what's going on.
Yep. Joy Draganis Engala, 7573 Highview Drive, Greendale, Wisconsin. I'm calling regarding the noise at The Rock again. Imagine that. The last two weekends have been absolutely ridiculous, annoying, irritating. Saturday, we had company over. We tried to sit in our backyard. The company asked us to go in the house because they were so irritated by the noise. Then, we're sitting in my kitchen. They ended up leaving sooner than they wanted to because they were still being irritated by the thump, 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 thump coming into my kitchen. My girlfriend's husband said, "Can we please leave? This is irritating me." He said, "I don't know how you live with this," every weekend. I said, "Every weekend for 10-plus years." We could not sit in our backyard. That is my yard. That is not the City of Franklin's yard. That is no one up here. It's not your yard. It's mine. I should be able to use my yard, accustomed to, A, the laws, the state statutes, the ordinances of Franklin, as well as the ordinances of Greendale, because I am a Greendale resident. And Greendale ordinances must be followed per the agreement with the county and this developer. Number two, we have found out, per the Facebook pages, that the bands are not using the designated sound system with the auto-limiter. They are using their own speakers. And I have plenty of pictures on my phone to validate this. Thus, maybe why we're having so much more trouble with the bass and the loud noise carrying through. And I guess lastly, no one has the right to tell me or any other neighbor what is acceptable or annoying to us on our own property in our own homes. That's up to us. That's our jurisdiction. That's not the city's, and that's not the developers', and that's not anyone else's. No one would want us to come to you and say, "You know what? That's okay. That's acceptable. We're good. Don't worry about it." You can accept this. 65 decibels is unacceptable at the property line. The ordinance states, once again, 50, 50 feet from the source. He is required to have an auto-limiter and the bands to be using that. Why is no one going up there and checking it? Why is it not being inspected? Because that's not what's being used. And that is something that he and his, I guess, maybe PR team, has put out on social media. That's not me even going up there and looking for it. That is up to the city to make sure that these rules and regulations are being followed. And once again, being in Greendale, once that noise hits my property line, it must abide by my ordinances, not Franklin's, mine, which is Greendale. Thank you.
Good evening. Linda Mathwick, 7321 Brun Drive. I stand before you not just as a resident, but somebody who deeply values accountability and transparency. These words aren't political slogans. They are the foundation of effective governance and the cornerstone of public trust. Many of you have said, "We need to be transparent." But transparency is not achieved through just your words. It is earned through consistent public action. That brings me to tonight's agenda on items G15, 16, and 17, currently listed for potential closed-session discussions. I recognize that some legal matters require confidentiality. But when decisions are being made that affect every resident on budgets, land use, development, and public safety, those discussions should not be hidden from the people they impact. Closed-door deliberations on these issues violate the very transparency that this council claims to uphold. Residents are shut out of the process, denied the opportunity to understand the reasoning behind the decisions that directly affect the neighbors' essential services and tax obligations. I call on this council to consider not just what is legally permissible, but what ethical leadership demands. Just because you can enter closed sessions doesn't mean you should. Transparency may not be easy, but it is also non-negotiable if you are truly committed to public trust. Now regarding item G16, it references two separate city locations, which is confusing and deserves clarification. I've been informed it may involve a tax increment financing or a TIF agreement. TIFs are supposed to be a last resort tool, not a default incentive for developers, especially those expecting immediate revenue or who could succeed without city funding. Franklin has seen successful developments without TIFs, proving that growth is possible without risking taxpayer dollars. So questions must be asked. Why is this unnamed developer receiving special treatment? If TIFs are being used to favor certain projects or individuals when others have thrived without them, then we also have to ask whose interests are being served, the developer or the residents? This council must demonstrate what real transparency looks like. Apply it to every decision at every meeting. The choices you make shape the future of this city, and you are accountable to every resident that you represent.
Three minutes, ma'am.
I'm almost done. Thank you. Do not overlook the need to approach these responsibilities with integrity and act not on what is easiest or most expedient, but what is best that serves your constituents. Thank you very much for your time.
Dana Gint, 9011 West Hawthorne Lane. I'm here once again to raise serious concerns about the unacceptable noise levels coming from The Rock Sports Complex, specifically the Umbrella Bar events on Friday, June 6th, Saturday, June 7th, and Saturday, June 14th. The noise levels into the surrounding neighborhoods is harmful, disruptive, and annoying. I'm here to request an official sound check for the Umbrella Bar events while involving the Alderman and the JPM firm, if possible. The prior sound check for May was just for milkman games. There were no notices given to any surrounding impacted neighbors about the Umbrella Bar sound check. This past Saturday, from 6:30 to 10:30 PM, 10:34 PM, music from the Umbrella Bar was clearly audible, word for word, from over 3/4 of a mile away. I have recordings on my phone to prove this. At 10:34 PM, the song was "Don't Stop Believin'" by Journey. I have a whole series of songs that I can tell you, every song that was played for hours. The noise was so loud inside my family home that we went for a walk in an attempt to escape the nuisance noise, only to find that the songs were clearly audible at the Whittenock Golf Course and at the Weird Nature Center over a mile and a half northwest. This is not an isolated incident. The noise from The Rock has received over 1,300 noise complaints from up to two miles away. It is part of a decade-long pattern of chronic excessive noise from the City of Franklin allowing this nuisance. City Code 121-9 states that noise from a special event must not carry unreasonably beyond the property's premises. Can you please explain to me why is this being tolerated? Okay, and then how about 18340? Noise disturbances prohibited across residential property lines from the use of loudspeakers, which is clearly what The Rock utilizes. Both those are not being followed by the city or the developer. I'm here to ask the Common Council how they're comfortable destroying the quality of life for the citizens around The Rock because this noise is a nuisance and intrusive and harmful. The Umbrella Bar was required to have a dedicated sound system installed in 2018. There is still not a dedicated sound system for all the musical performance with the auto-limiter installed. The city selectively enforces its own laws. Even the tsunami car wash sound engineering study indicated that even a 5-decibel increase has a significant impact on surrounding areas. Yet, the Common Council approved 15 to 20 decibels after knowing this, 15 to 20 decibels above the residential district. And that is highlighted in the Resolution 2024, Page 2, that 50 decibels is what the receiving district determines as the residential property line. Yet, the Common Council approved 15 to 20 decibels above that standard. The city does not file its own contracts. Ordinances or codes established to protect citizens from nuisance.
Three minutes, ma'am.
Okay. For example, the PDD specifically requires that a maximum, that a superior sound system would be installed at The Rock to minimize all noise. Obviously, allowing 50 to 65 decibels into surrounding neighborhoods is not minimizing the noise. This is a requirement to minimize the adverse impacts, not only--
3:30, ma'am. Please finish your thoughts.
I urge the body to take action to stop ignoring the complaints and to force decimal limits that comply with 50 decibels at the property line, which is consistent with what other businesses are held to. Residents deserve peace not to be drowned out by concerts every Saturday night throughout November. Thank you.
Curtis Bolton, 8035 West Imperial Drive, Franklin, Wisconsin. I was at a previous Common Council meeting, and I thought it was a very good discussion about transparency and a few other issues. I think there are a couple ideas that were missing in the discussion, though. One of them is that the City of Franklin is actually a nickname. It's a nickname for the citizens of Franklin. And I wish everybody up there would remind that, that when you enter into a contract, you bind me, you bind my neighbors, you bind everybody in this room. And you need to do that with the benefit of the community in mind. One issue I had, one thing I had an issue with was the city paying for the sound study. I don't understand this. It just doesn't make any sense. I think the developer should pay for it. And if he doesn't want to pay for it, that's fine. He just won't have anything to do, he won't have any events to do because he does not want to pay for it. I don't see why I need to pay for it, why my taxes should go for it. The next thing is that you are our representatives, not our rulers. I too have some issues with closed session. I don't mind if you go into closed session. But I think once it's done, once it's concluded, the results of that closed session about how and why decisions are made should be revealed to the citizens of Franklin. We're the ones at the top of the org chart. So I think you do need to be a bit more transparent on that. The last issue I want to talk about is the rule of law. I look at my property in a different way from my neighbors. I don't have a manicured lawn. And when one of my neighbors said, "Well, he's got some plants on his property that the City of Franklin says are not legal," I did not argue with that. I think that's one of the things that you accept when you move to the City of Franklin, that you are willing to abide by the laws of Franklin, even if you don't know what all of them are. So I did take care of that. But here we have a situation with The Rock where some people do not have to obey the law. I don't know why exceptions are granted to the law. I know it's required by state law to have that exemption available, but there's nothing, nothing demanding you to even try and come up with some reasons for why you deny it. It's like, no, we're just not going to do it. We don't believe in granting exceptions to our laws. It's time for the rule of law to be followed. I don't think there should be any exceptions for anybody, no matter how much money they have or who they are.
Locked it up in the air.
Please don't let her fall off. That's the only one we got.
And I time this, so you don't have to shout out three at me. I'll finish up like 20 seconds after that.
I'm sorry. Just politely advise.
All right. Chris Wilheim, 3851 West College Avenue. In 2022, Citizen Andy Pelkey filed two formal complaints. First, against the former director of administration and former mayor, and then a second, following inappropriate conduct during a meeting. Believing he was denied due process under the previous administration, Mr. Pelkey submitted an open records request for all related documents, but was denied access to 26 records withheld under claims of attorney-client privilege. On May 20th, 2025, this council unanimously approved a motion under attorney-client privilege to review and release all relevant records, an important step toward transparency. The public should be aware that former Mayor Olson attempted to block release of the complaint records, claiming he was the client, a claim that would only apply if the investigator had been acting as his personal attorney, which was not supposed to be the case. The council, not any one person, is the legal client. Ironically, Mr. Olson is now publicly accusing the council of withholding information despite your efforts to do the opposite. To me, this suggests blame shifting and a need of help to shield his behavior. After the record release, Mr. Pelkey asked if I would review the documents, given my prior knowledge on the matter. Note that both Mr. Pelkey's open records request and the current council's motion were inclusive of being provided all relevant records. My review reveals the following concerns. There are no emails from kwilheim@franklinwi.gov included in the records, despite my request for information when preparing to chair the complaint meeting in the council president's absence. A key attachment referenced on Page 5 and at least nine other times regarding the council president administering the process was neither attached or released. This missing file outlines predetermined steps for how the investigator would conduct the investigation as if it had already been approved by the council. In reality, the council had never seen it. Despite my request to provide it to the council, it was never presented for review, consensus, or vote. Claiming attorney-client privilege over a document, the client, the council, never received or reviewed, is a serious concern and raises questions about transparency and proper procedure. In conclusion, selective records were withheld from both Mr. Pelkey and the previous council and this council, the rightful client, creating a false impression of council approval for a process they never saw. These omissions point to the lack of due process and a direct, rather than partial, handling of the complaint and open record requests. This raises serious concerns about record integrity and who had authority to withhold or alter documents, especially since these issues predate the current administration. The city now has an obligation to correct this failure, release the full complaint records, and clearly acknowledge that Mr. Pelkey, which is his concern, was denied due process. The public deserves honesty, transparency, and accountability, which seems to be the theme tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no one else approaching, I'll close citizen comment period. And I will address some of the concerns that were brought forth. And this is not a back and forth in rebuttal. This is simply clarifying some points. So first point about going into closed session, there are very strict guidelines about going into closed session. And to sort of your point, when we have the information that we can share, once the council has made the decision and the direction to go, and we have the facts, and we've discussed them, debated them, and come to a conclusion, that will be made public because that's where the direction the city's going to go. So when we're negotiating, that would be absolutely ridiculous, foolish, shortsighted, and definitely not in the best interest of the city to negotiate the city's position in open session. Absolutely not. We've got, you know, in fact, one of the developers here, I'm sure he could just hit record, and we could talk about all the ways in which we want to proceed, and he'd take them down, and he'd giggle, and he'd go back to his team, and we'd never get anything done. So that's that part. So when, and I'm with you, and I actually agree about not going into closed session as many times as we can, but there's some things that we have to, and this is definitely one of them. But then again, whatever the council comes up with and decides that is public record, public knowledge, and it does get disseminated because the plan will be coming forward. Number two, when it came to this past Saturday, when I was given notice from Dana and another neighbor about the noise levels, and I went right to my phone, I've got it saved as a favorite, pop it in there, and it's in the mid-50s. So I'm not sure what to say. Then I know, and I'm well aware, that there's a science to this, and a science with the height, a science with the bass. Are they using the current setup that they replaced it with? So I understand there's those moving parts. And that's why when I tell the two of you ladies right there, JPM cannot come fast enough. So that's where we're with that, and that's where we're at. And I think also with Linda, your points, I think we're now covered with the transparency part about going into closed session because that is part of negotiations. And then once, because it affects your neighborhood directly, once we have something to bring forward that's agreed upon, we can do that. But until that point comes, absolutely not. We never would go into an open session negotiations, which you just don't do. So with that said, thank you for your comments. Moving forward. Now, we're going to be holding off on the proclamations for the Eagle Skulls until July 1st. So until July 1st, that doesn't affect you, does it? Okay, you're just here? Good. Thank you, Madam Clerk. C, approval of the minutes for regular Common Council meeting of June 3rd, 2025. Is there a motion on this?
I make the motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second? We have a first and a second. Any further discussion on the minutes as presented? Say none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? As I have a motion carries, we have no hearings. Under D, we have no organizational business. Under E, we have no letters. Under F. Now, we're going to go to, under G1, we have a consent agenda. This was put in place by Madam Clerk. Makes a lot of sense to move things along as well as providing information on there. If there's any reason that we have to take these individually, I would like to see a motion to approve Sub As through Sub Hs and Hr.
I'll make the motion to approve all of G1.
Second. We have a first and a second. Could you do a roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Alderman Pecorelli.
Aye.
Alderwoman Eichmann.
Aye.
Alderman Assam.
Aye.
Alderwoman Day.
Aye.
Alderman Salus.
Aye.
Alderman Craig.
Aye.
Excellent. Six ayes on those. Motion carries. Going on to G2. G2, an ordinance to repeal Chapter 167, Sex Offenders Recreate Chapter 167 Entitled Sex Offender Residency, Restrictions, and Child Safety Zones of the Municipal Code of Franklin, Wisconsin. This has been long in the works. There's, as the city council will attest, this has been a lot of moving parts. It's been very fluid. There's been some confusion. We've had some neighbors that have had a lot of issues with this, and the council will try to shed some light on that. So if we could turn on his button. Perfect. Mr. City Attorney, you've got the floor.
The basic summary is set forth on the action sheet. There've been changes in laws over the years, primarily court case law and also the Wisconsin statutes. And it's necessary to bring the current code up to date pursuant to all those laws. And the main three things involved here are the distance factor with regard to how much available housing is there for sex offenders to reside within the city. And that should be reduced, currently at 2,000 feet. And I'm recommending that it be reduced to no higher than 1,000 feet. There are maps in the packet that depict that and show the numbers. And with regard to the current map, there is one of the court cases. Might have been Hoffman versus Pleasant Prairie, perhaps. In any event, the court specifically said that particular ordinance only allowed for less than 10% of housing area within that municipality and was violating the Constitution. The current 2,000-foot requirement in Franklin is less than 10% available housing. So that has to be reduced. And then the second thing was the original domicile provision. And point blank, cases provided. One of them was from a couple of years ago. And it was Trader versus City of Meskigo. And I included an order and decision. It's an eastern district of Wisconsin federal court case. And the decision specifically found the original domicile provision to violate the ex post facto provision of the Constitution. It provided punishment to someone retroactively. After the offense, the court decided that in effect constitutes banishment and punishment for many, many, many of these sex offenders. And so the court found it unconstitutional, and that should be deleted. Also, within a number of these decisions with regard to due process, the recommendation is to create a board of appeal. So that-- So that individuals may have a right to seek an exception under particular circumstances, and it sets forth the standards which a Board of Appeals may consider to grant such an exception, and that furthers due process. So those, those were the main three changes. And with regard to the distance from specified facility uses for a residence, 1,000 feet essentially allows for about 46% housing availability. And there is some mention in one of these cases about kind of, well, it's, it's not even half of that particular municipality or something, but it's relatively substantial. And then the, the other map was 750 feet. That allows for 57% available housing, and the 500 feet allows for 73%. With regard to what was prepared here, in addition to all the cases and the studies in general, set forth factual basis for recidivism and public interest in the health, safety, and welfare for legislating this type of ordinance and this ordinance. And I also conferred with attorneys who, including those that litigated some of these cases, the, the one that started essentially the concerns by municipalities for all the sex offender residency restriction ordinance terms, which Franklin, within 24 hours, adopted the second one in the state back a little over 20 years ago, and then had the first litigation on it, and the city prevailed on that. Hoffman versus Village of Pleasant Prairie. I talked with the attorney who litigated that one and also one of his coworkers, who was a municipal attorney for many municipalities, and essentially, and it wasn't just them, I also talked with the attorney for the Koch versus Village of Heartland, which also found the provision of domicile, et cetera, to be retroactive in violation of the ex post facto clause. And I talked to the city attorney for Muskego. And frankly, there was strong language in terms of their thoughts and recommendations, and it was amend, amend the code, be compliant at this time. Amend the code with these specific provisions that were discussed. And with closest on point is the inclusion of that Muskego case, and then it never got published, the final decision where the Eastern District found the original domicile to be 100% in violation of the Constitution. That ended up in a settlement, part of which was City of Muskego amended their code to delete the original domicile provision, and that's what ended that case. Since the council is to review this first, and per the mayor's to be to this meeting, open for any and all questions, obviously, but also there's a, believe some mention of the sex offender residency restrictions in the Unified Development Ordinance, and I didn't get to checking the updated UDO, but that potentially is a zoning amendment, public hearing process, and the thought with the only so much time to get this done, get this here first and then take that other step. And finally, just as initial points, Police Chief Leirman reviewed all of this and supports the ordinance as drafted.
Excellent. Alderwoman Day?
Thank you. So I'm going to try to keep this as, as professional as I can. Category makes my, my skin crawl. I have several questions, and I guess the first one is just a simple yes or no for the city attorney. You made reference to the statutes changing within Wisconsin. So is our current Chapter 167 in violation of state law right now?
It's not in compliance.
What is not in compliance?
Well, it doesn't have the provision for if a convicted sex offender is released on supervised release and/or if the state directs that that individual live in this particular residence, the local municipalities may not regulate that or supersede that within their municipal code.
But it doesn't have any parameters as for a distance number because in all of these case laws, and I, I'll admit that I didn't read it 100% word for word, but I'm going to tell you, I read about 85% of this, and it's kind of across the board with the, the numbers, and you can't compare apples to apples in communities because 1,000 feet in Franklin, when homes have, you know, quarter acre, full acre, five acre lots, is different than 1,000 feet in West Alice where everybody's on a quarter acre lot or smaller. It's, it's different. The Pleasant Prairie case study, that really, that one, they were so restrictive in what they did. Yes, it was down to 10%, but it was beyond the 2,000 feet. It was also that sex offenders couldn't live within 500 feet of each other. It was the housing that was left for them were million dollar mansions that they weren't going to be able to afford. So it's not, it's not the same. So to say that, you know, 10% here and 10% there, if you look at the map of Franklin, that's not the same map. So I'm having a really, really big issue with having it or more than that for the distance. I mean, this is, it's not written anywhere. I'm, I wish that there was someone here from PD that we could ask some clarifying questions from their side of this. I understand that they're in favor of the ordinance as it's written, but how it's written in here, that space is blank for the distance.
That's correct.
So.
For the council to decide.
So exactly. So they didn't weigh in on that. So I would have liked to have had some conversation with them. I also would like to know what our neighboring municipalities use for some of these because if we're going to reduce our distance to 1,000, but everybody else around us is 1,500, 2,000, it's greater than that, suddenly Franklin becomes all kinds of desirable, and I don't want more than we absolutely have to have here. And I get there are all sorts of arguments about due process and, and time served and all of that, but again, this is my personal opinion, and I'm just one vote, I don't care. I want this to be as strict as possible. I get that we don't want unwelcome lawsuits, but I want this to be absolutely as strict as possible. And if we're not absolutely against the state law, I don't see what we have to change. If there's something in there that is 100% black and white that you can show me, we don't have or we're not doing, absolutely put that in, but some of this stuff isn't. And then the appeal board, there's already an appeal process with police. So if somebody wants to move here and they can't go into whatever particular domicile they want, the first step is they can appeal to the police chief or a designee. So there's a review there. They say yes or no. After that, there's another step. They can go to the county. We don't need a third step. And the fact that you're putting that appeals board of random citizens in between the police and the county seems absolutely ludicrous because who's going to decide who those residents are? I mean, what sort of background are they going to have? So I, I don't think it's necessary. There's already two appeal processes for them. And I mean, if, if it goes, you know, we say no, police say no, the county says no, then you can keep going. There's a court system for a reason. I don't think we need to have another board or committee because I don't know who's going to want to volunteer to be on that board. And if they do, I'd be very concerned that how impartial they would be for it because I can't think of a lot of people that would be impartial if a convicted sex offender came in front of them and said they wanted to live somewhere in, in the city. So I, I don't see where that is something that's beneficial either. So I'll yield for now. I just, I, I don't see any reason to change this.
Okay. And as a, as a little bit of an add-on to that, you know, 20 years ago, as the council will recall, it was extremely well-attended. I believe it was the high school, and it was a big, big deal. I, I concur, don't want them here, have no desire to have them here, and you'll see that the state will go and battle for them at any time, which is shame on the state, but that's the process it is. And as far as, you know, making any sort of changes that makes us more desirable, absolutely not. I thousand percent agree. We do not want anybody saying, hey, Franklin, that's, that's the place to be. Come on. So we don't want that. And then we also looking at that other way, you, you, you actually laid it out perfectly about what the options are to get permission and how you would actually be if you wanted to challenge something. And my thought was if we had to, by law, have some sort of committee, I, my movement would be to just simply have it go to council. I wouldn't want to create another board or commission and vet people, and you've got a whole sorts of other craziness that could go there. So I asked councillor to bring something forward because we were not in compliance. We had a number of issues. We got that one guy that lives by Robinwood that is, you know, was highly publicized. Don't want him here. We don't want any of them here in the city of Franklin. Get out, go somewhere else. But what does the law say, and what does it open us up to if in fact we go down the denial process? So councillor, I'm going to actually go back to you for a second here if you could address some of our concerns before we move forward on this.
Well, and I only took a certain portion of all of the work products on this, and one of them was reviewing metro area municipalities. Did they still have domicile? What was the distance factor and ever? But I did not bring that here. I know there are some proximate ones that still have 2,000 feet or more than 1,000, et cetera, but they are in the process of working to amend it for the same purposes as presented to the council here. Off the top of my head, I think Greenfield's 1,000 feet. I think South Milwaukee's 1,000 feet.
Well, it would be nice to have that, for the council to see that entire sheet, and I think at this point, there might be an opportunity that we need to table this till the next meeting. And just to get everything there, you don't need to put in the.
800 pages.
800 pages unless you want to recopy them.
Well, this was the first go-round, and my original thought and plan had been from day one to try and get it to all the council members at least three weeks before, so.
Okay. So Alderwoman, did you want to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I was going to suggest the same, Mayor. I'm in full agreement with Alderwoman Day. We need more information on this. I'd like to make a motion to table this until August.
Till?
If we can table until August.
Okay. What's the first meeting in August?
What about July?
We forget, we just hate July, we just want to go to August. You want to go to August? We'll do the first meeting in August.
Well, you know, it's trying to bring this into compliance.
Right.
And the police chief supports this.
Is I still the floor? Thank you. I would like to also request that the police chief is here for questions. Not that we're doubting you, Jesse, but there's questions that I'd like to ask. I'll be reaching out to the chief as well about the incident the mayor referred to, or the residents, I should say, the mayor referred to in my district. I know I'm going to have some, some very not happy constituents about this. I mean, it, I'm basically just speechless that someone can reside that close to a school, a playground, a park, as a mother and a grandmother, it literally scares the heck out of me.
I'll provide some additional studies.
August 5th? August 5th?
About the second meeting in July.
Well, that's July 15th or August 5th?
I'll go with August 5th.
August 5th it is. Is there a second for the table to August 5th?
A second.
Okay, we got a first and a second for the discussion. Alderwoman?
Just like, I wonder if there is a statistics on how many sex offenders we currently have in our city. And I also, I'm just like trying to see if there's any other criteria that we can use other than the distance, like, you know, the way Alderman Day, you know, presented. What about, you know, distance could be irrelevant when you're dealing with large lots. What about if you have high-rise building with 300 units stacked on top of each other? So, you know, the density speaks volumes here rather than, you know, mere, just like distance. So, but we, we need a lot of, a lot more information than what we, than what we have.
I yield. Councillor, anything before we, we got a first and a second to go to August 5th? First and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I just have a motion carries. Everything's going to come back August 5th. If there's certain things you want questioned, please get those questions to Director of Administration. Lots of stuff here. G3, resolution to waive floodplain land use permit filing fees for specific properties. And there's a few mentioned here. Good evening, Mr. Martinez. You've got the floor, sir. Just give it a little test, see if that's working. It's Danielle's work? Can you give it a test? You are live.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Martinez, you have the floor. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. So the typical process for any development or structure within the floodplain is to obtain a floodplain land use permit in addition to the normal permits, building permits, electrical permits, et cetera. So for these sites, there are a total of nine sites. Another approval was issued, like a building permit or a site plan amendment, but the floodplain land use permit was missed in the process. And then the city and staff is working now with the property owners to come into compliance. And since this oversight was not the fault of the owner, our staff is proposing is to waive the filing fee for the floodplain land use permit for these properties that actually obtain other permits but not the floodplain land use permits.
Perfect sense. For discussion, Alderwoman Day.
Mr. Martinez, did, did you or someone in your department figure out what caused the oversight for these properties and why that, that check was missed?
Yes. So this kind of structure was kind of installed like between 2018, 2020. So at that time, if an application was submitted to planning or another department, we didn't check for the floodplain land use permit, but now we, we change it because of these cases, and then where a new permit is submitted, we create a separate review, and then we take a look if the property is located or not in the floodplain.
Okay. Great. That was going to be my follow-up question, if we had something in place to make sure we don't miss this again. Awesome. Thank you.
Further questions, Mr. Salus?
My question, yeah, I, I do realize that a permit might be missed, but what is the consequences like? Was there, like, you know, the permit issue become irrelevant, but was there like, you know, any modifications or changes to be done to the property as a result of that? Like what would have been done differently? If the. of that? Like what would have been done differently if the permit was granted?
Sorry, could you refer your question?
Assuming the permit was issued.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, what, what would have been done differently to the property? You know, assuming there was a permit, like, you know, a, a, any, any like damage or anything was not, you know, done properly because of the, this process that a permit was missed? What would you differently if you had a permit, like, you know, to the structure or to the property?
If we received the application today, then we have this separate review to check if the structure that is being proposed is in the floodplain. And if it is, then we will, uh, hold on the building permit and ask for the separate floodplain land use permit.
I think-
As did, answer your question?
Yeah, if I may, um, I believe I know what the heart of your question is. We didn't have a process that existed during this time, which is why we're asking for a waiver at this point. We have been working with FEMA, um, regarding these floodplain violations for the better part of two years, I think. And these are the, the remaining people that have permits for other things, but not for the floodplain because we didn't have a process for that at that time.
I see. Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Uh, there's a motion on the floor. Alderwoman, Ickman.
Are we expecting to come across any other properties with the same issue?
No, we look at the total property that we have in the, the community assistance business, and these are the one that we identify that receive another type of permit, but not the floodplain land use permit.
Thank you.
Alderman Craig.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
We've got a first and a second. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Do you like that motion, sir? All right. Later, we'll hear what's crazy from you. G4, orders to amend the municipal code as it pertains to the architectural review board. Mr. Martinez is still the floor.
Thank you. Uh, with the former unified development ordinance for any, uh, new home or building addition, only residential, um, a step called the architectural review was required. Uh, basically, the building permit was presented before the architectural review board, and they make a decision, uh, if the new house complied with the standards. Uh, however, with the new unified development ordinance, this step was, uh, removed kind of to streamline the permitting process and also because the standards were vague. Let's say, for example, that the colors are in harmony with the surrounding area. So that, that language was eliminated. So now with the new UDO, kind of the, the architectural review board is no longer necessary. Uh, and then this ordinance is to amend the municipal code and to remove the language that refers to the unified development ordinance, the, the former unified development ordinance.
Further discussion on this? There's a motion in there?
I'll make the motion to approve.
A second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. G5, resolution to ratify and reapprove resolution number 2024-8084, resolution conditionally approving a one-lot certified survey map being a redivision of Lot 2 certified survey map number 8318, Outlet 1 of certified survey map number 6313, and Outlet 1 of certified survey map number 5401, and lands all being part of the Northwest 1/4 of the Northwest 1/4 of Section 10, Town 5 North, Range 21 East, in the city of Franklin, County of Milwaukee, State of Wisconsin, By Path General LLC applicant, Initech LLC property owner approximately 7154, South 76th Street. So-
I'll make the motion to adopt.
Okay, we got a motion to adopt. Is there a second? First and a second. Further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Uh, G6 in D5, ordinance to amend ordinance number 2023-2546, ordinance creating section 15-3.0447 of the Franklin Unified Development Ordinance establishing Plan Development District Number 42, Path General, approximately 7154, South 76th Street. Is there a motion on this?
I'll make the motion.
A second.
We have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Uh, G7, we will transition slowly to a different director. A resolution authorizing Director of Administration to execute a statement of work with TransUnion for cybersecurity incident notification and identity protection services. Director Motowski, good evening and welcome.
Good evening. Uh, this proposal right now is being recommended by insurance provider, uh, which is Tokyo Marine. Uh, it is also by the legal counsel, of which Tokyo Marine is also subscribed to, uh, which has been Louis Biswa. This is pretty much the finalization of the cybersecurity incident that we had on August 15th, 2024. Uh, for those new to the council, we did have a security breach on that day where someone, uh, logged in through a VPN account using a shared account with a password that was fairly easy to guess. They got onto the internal network, and at that time, they began in, uh, uh, what they call basically a data exfiltration, which is basically transmitting files from our main file print server uh, over to a server on the, in an internet, um, that was located up in Canada. We know from log files that they were able to extract 52 gigabytes of data uh, all the way up before Rapid7, who is our security, uh, monitoring provider, turned around and noticed it. I got the call at 1:30 in the morning and told them basically, no, that's not us. This is, this is not good. Uh, we, we need to terminate that connection. And we brought that connection down and brought down hard. Fortunately, we did actually able to get the script that they were using to actually perform the data exfiltration, um, as part of the data forensics uh, done by Surefire, which was the first portion of the postmortem of what we tried to figure out of what was the impact of the, the actual security incident. Uh, what we did as we ran that script, unfortunately, the script was run where it was actually multi-threaded. It was configured to use nine different threads, which means it's randomized on what files it turns around and gets. So when we tried to turn around and run the script multiple times, we got different results at the end result dataset of these are the files that you got. So we did not know, at the end of the day, even having their script, what files were actually exfiltrated, uh, from the server. We looked through various log files, various event logs to try to figure this out. Um, that came up negative as well. So then it moved on to the, the next portion of it is, uh, the data forensics for it. So you don't know what files, we know it's 52 gigs, but we didn't know what files were actually turning around and stolen. So we have to assume that it could have been any file under the entire file server, which is 2.5 terabytes worth of data that they could have had. So the data forensics company, uh, Haystack, had to go through all of the files. Why did this take so long? Because they had to go through all of the files on the entire file server. First, they had to do an object character recognition to make it readable. And then they had, once they turned around and did that, then they had to run various programs in there to look for data patterns in it to determine, is there personally identifiable information or any financial information like an account type, social security number in it that might compromise the actual person? So, uh, they, they ran that, and it took a long time to turn around and do that level of data forensics for it. All of this has been paid for by Tokyo Marine, who is our cybersecurity insurance provider, uh, for it. Out of the, out of the result set that they had, they had over 2,000 incidents with social security numbers. And this is not including, uh, City of Franklin employees. Uh, so there's about 2,500 people approximately that had social security numbers potentially identified that was on the server that could have been part of that 52 gig. And then there was 13,666 individuals. So realizing each file may be perturbed to one individual, or it may, one individual may have many files on the server. So they were able to identify 13,666 people that potentially could have had their information compromised as part of this. It is the advice of Louis Biswa that we send out notification letters, um, to all the people, which will be the 13,666. Uh, they will each get mailed, uh, a letter saying, informing them that potentially their personally identifiable information was compromised on it. We don't know if they were part of this subset or not. In your council packet, there's two letter templates that they're showing. Um, basically, if it was social security information or if it was just general PII information that would be sent out. The company that is going to be doing this is TransUnion. TransUnion's a credit bureau. They're also one of the companies that turn around and provide credit monitoring. So it'll be one year of, of, if they want it, of credit monitoring being offered over to the, to the people. Um, that will be paid for through the cybersecurity insurance on it. And TransUnion will also be setting up a call center to handle any of the calls for any of the people that turn around and actually have the request. This will now be the end game of the cybersecurity event. That once we send the notification and give them the option to turn around and take the cybersecurity insurance, that will then become the end of, of the liability for the cyber insurance provider.
Excellent. Well-stated. Questions?
I'll make the motion to adopt.
Okay, we've got a first. Is there a second on this?
Second.
First and second for the discussion. We've got Alderwoman Day, then the councillor.
Uh, thank you. Um, I just have a couple of, uh, just follow-up security questions, you know, moving forward. Uh, so we had talked about, um, having two-factor authentication. Um, how close are we to having that for?
That's coming. Uh, we just had our kickoff meeting today, so we have to do a domain migration first. Uh, and then after that, we will be implementing a Microsoft Office 365 migration and then using UB Keys to turn around and do 2FA.
Okay. And then I know that we have our cyber insurance company here, and the next item is about penetration testing.
Mm-hmm.
Outside of that, is there any plans to have any additional, like, cybersecurity uh, for, for the city or any potential, uh, training for city staff where? Uh, so the company I work for had a scare. I don't think, I don't think there was an actual breach, but it was, it was a legitimate scare. And so we now have a, a cybersecurity company that works with us, and every now and again, they hit with, uh, a, what they think is something that's tantalizing to someone to click on. Um, and it's sort of the test, and then they provide training based on the people that click on it and what type of, of, uh, article it is. And I know that's not exactly what happened here, but is that something that-
We already have it. It's NO Before. Uh, you'll, you'll probably get email messages from NO Before saying, you have to take your cybersecurity training. And as part of that, this is now part of NIST where you have to turn around and do that. And the, uh, the police department with the CGIS requirements, this is required now by the FBI that they go, undergo the security awareness training. So there's about 45 minutes worth of security awareness training, and then we can then turn around, uh, send these false click, click the link tests, and we can see how many people actually didn't pay attention to the training and click the link.
So you, you do get the results of that, that you can see what is happening, and you can tailor messages to staff if-
Correct.
See a trend in something.
And then if they continue to do it, they get more training.
Okay. And then my last question is just for the actual, um, insurance carrier, Tokyo Marine. I know that they're paying for, for this, and it doesn't cost the city anything, but is there, does this insurance work like other insurances for other things? Where if you make claims, then all of a sudden your cost to them in the future goes up? So like, if I have, you know, hail damage to my roof and I make a claim, suddenly my homeowner's insurance goes up the next year. If I get in a car accident, my car insurance goes up. So is this a similar thing where, because we have this large issue that we're dealing with, where the next time we sign a contract with them or the next time our premium comes due, we're looking like they might, you know, jack us-
Tokyo Marine is the insurance provider for the League of Municipalities. So basically, our claim is across the board for all the municipalities that are covered by the League that are using their insurance. So-
Small fish, big pond, so we probably won't see-
Correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Just, uh-
Needs to hit the button.
Did you propose using the city standard form contract?
No, because the contract isn't with us. The contract is actually with, um, uh, uh, TransUnion and also with Tokyo Marine for it. So we, we are the beneficiary to the statement of work for it, but the contract itself is not with us. So TransUnion is not making a contract with us. TransUnion's making a contract actually with the, uh, the insurance company.
Well, it says executed and delivered by the party's authorized representatives, and one of the signature provisions below that is City of Franklin.
That's to, that was to my knowledge that, that's why we did not use the, the city, city form on it. Plus, I don't know if the city form would, standard contract would actually cover a situation like this.
And the other reason I brought it up was there's a limitation of liability in there at some point for the services provider, um, limits liability to only the costs charged for services, and that is the cap on it. And also with regard to, um, any litigation jurisdiction that is governing law, dispute resolution, state of Delaware. So I thought I'd bring that up.
Thank you.
Alderman Craig.
Uh, two questions. Number one, uh, I remember you talking to us a while back about, uh, the digitizing of files within the city and, uh, doing that. And would that then take care of the OCR where there's a lack of that?
Yes. Uh, right now, we are only doing that for the engineering department.
Okay.
Um, that is a, a contract that we actually have with Conica Minolta. Uh, they're putting all their information into a square nine document management system. Also nice is all the documents go into a database, not onto a file server. So context is not set by the organization of the file structure. You can tag everything. You can, we literally mark if it has PII or SPII or financial information. That's a tag that we put in with these documents as they're turning around and being entered in, and they also are being OCR'd as they're going in.
Great. Um, and then my other question is, when you ran the script, and I don't know if, if you, if you are able to answer this question or not, when that, the amount of data that was removed, was that full files or were they kind of stripped as like, like almost like a torrent sort of thing? Where there're going to be file fragments that could be reconstituted later on and just kind of filled in the gaps, or is it full, full individual files that were-
It did it as an SCP.
Okay.
Uh, so it was doing as a, as an SCP file copy for it. So it basically created nine threads. So it's like, if you want to consider kind of like nine different computers all turning around and doing a file transfer at exact, at the exact same time. So it would have been full files, but the reason why it was only 52 is it was cut off in midstream. So they got full files for it. They didn't get packets of, of files for it. And, but we do know that, yeah, it was abruptly terminated.
Got it. Thank you. Okay, we've got a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. G8, authorize, authorize a professional services agreement between the City of Franklin and Secure Compliance Solutions LLC, SCS, to provide external and internal penetration testing and reporting services funded by account number 01-0144-5299.
Motion to authorize.
Second.
We got a first and a second. Why don't we do roll call on this, please?
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Slus?
Aye.
Alderman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Song?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman?
Aye.
Alderman Peckerrold?
Aye. Six ayes, no noes, motion carries. Uh, well done.
Okay, thank you very much.
And thank you, sir. In ordinance to amend ordinance 2024-2649, in ordinance adopting the 2025 annual budget for the general fund to provide additional planning, department subscriptions, appropriations to support the UDO enhanced graphics proposal. Uh, Mr. Martinez, you are back, and you've got the floor.
Thank you. Um, the city, uh, the city currently, uh, hosts the, uh, Unified Development Ordinance and the municipal code in the Ecode 360 platform that you can look at the code, share the code, do like a multi-search, look at the previous version of the code. So kind of is a platform designed for, for municipal codes. Uh, and now with the- it's a platform designed for, for municipal codes. Uh, and now with the new unified development ordinance, um, that has a lot of graphics. So, the company, uh, the general code that runs this platform presented this proposal to codify the new UDO into this platform. We currently have the new UDO as a PDF in the website, uh, but this will allow to get the new UDO into this, uh, platform.
Excellent. Further discussion? Is there a motion?
What's the motion to adopt?
I second.
We have a first and a second. Get the second. Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G10, a resolution designating an interim deputy treasurer for the City of Franklin, Madam Director of Finance.
All right. So, come in two weeks, our deputy treasurer, who's been with us for over 20 years, is retiring, um, which allows for the finance and treasury department to really determine the structure of both departments, and how we can merge some management positions and/or, uh, secure job duties amongst multiple positions. So I brought it in front of the finance committee to essentially take this time between the retirement of the deputy treasurer and the retirement of the accounting supervisor, which should be in the next, um, 12 to 18 months, and determine the best restructuring program for both departments, what that looks like, um, and possibly merge the two management positions under myself. So to really take that time to do some analysis, potentially bring in an off-site, uh, company to do a full analysis of both departments, and determine, um, the actual amount of employees that it will take to, uh, run the finance and treasury department within the City of Franklin. And so, determining that I have an employee who is currently our accountant. Um, she kind of came in as a merged position two years ago. Um, and just seeing that she really has the will to work, has the will to multitask, and be a good fit for this deputy treasurer position, um, in the interim.
Uh, well stated. Discussion. Mr. Craig?
Um, I'd just like to say that this is really smart future planning, and not something that we have to play a very last-minute sort of thing. We saw this with the police department, uh, when certain retirements were coming that we...
And fire.
And fire, yes. Uh, that we hire above and beyond. So that way, there would be a, a very small, uh, change when, when personnel, uh, came and went. So I applaud you for looking forward and, you know, uh, planning, so that way we are able to maintain the same level of services for, for all of our residents. And with that, I'd like to, uh, make the motion to adopt.
I'll second.
First and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carry. G11, resolution designating signatures for checks and orders pursuant to section 66.0607 Wisconsin statutes. Madam Director of Finance, you still have the floor.
Um, I just wanted to state that, yes, our current city policy says that the treasurer and the deputy treasurer should be check signers. Um, I wanted to change that for the interim, seeing as the current now interim deputy treasurer is also still going to be administering payable duties. And so to have that segregation of duties, of having her be the person entering the checks, printing the checks, we also didn't want her to be the person signing the checks in my absence. So having it be a different person until further, you know, restructuring was determined just seemed like the best outcome.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I second.
First and a second. Seeing any further discussion? Seeing none. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G12, City of Franklin's Community Development Block Grant Program projects for 2026. Uh, Madam Director of Administration?
This is something that comes forward every year. Uh, we're just looking for approval to move ahead with our application. Uh, every year, we provide funds to different, um, areas, and they are listed within here. I'm just looking for an approval.
Okay. Is there a motion as stated here?
I'll make the motion as stated.
I will second.
First and second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G13, a resolution authorizing the installation of a fence within the south 20-foot storm sewer easement upon Lot 140 in Imperial Heights, addition number five, being a subdivision of parts of the southwest one-fourth, of the northwest one-fourth of section 13, township five north, range 21 east. In the City of Franklin, Milwaukee County, Wisconsin, 8155 South 42nd Street, tax key number 8080145000. Chad and Jennifer Van Deenute, applicant.
I make a motion to adopt.
I second.
Good. Smart. First and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G14, resolution authorizing the installation of a fence within the 30-foot private planting screen plat restriction upon Lot 74 of Willow Point Estates, addition number four, subdivision 8820 West Whispering Oaks Court, Superior Fence and Rail of Milwaukee is the applicant.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Okay.
First and second. Alderman Salus. All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. G15, glasses for this one. All right. A motion to enter into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes 19.85 Sub 1 Seveas Edward, to deliberate upon information, terms, and provisions of the City of Franklin, potential provision of public water supply to the village of Raymond, the potential negotiation of terms in relation thereto, including but not limited to potential agreement terms for the provisions of the public water supply, and potential agreement terms with the relation to the public infrastructure work to provide such public water supply, and the investing of public funds and governmental actions in relation thereto for competitive and bargaining reasons, and to re-enter open session at the same place thereafter, to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate.
Motion to go into close.
Second.
First and second. Let's go with a roll call.
Alderman Pecorelli?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderwoman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman?
Aye.
Alderman Pecorelli?
Aye.
Six ayes, no noes. Motion carries. We are slowly going into closed session. You let me know. Good. It's 8:53 PM. Uh, we are on item Gias and George 16. The motion is to continue negotiations with the developer, and then bring back updates as the council is requiring. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
First, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G17, a motion in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 Sub 1 Seveas Edward, for competitive and bargaining reasons, to consider terms relating to potential commercial industrial manufacturing developments and proposals, and the investing of public funds and governmental actions in relation thereto, and to effect such developments, including the terms and provisions of potential development agreements for, including but not limited to, properties in the southeast corner of South 76th Street and West Rossin Avenue, and to re-enter open session at the same time and place thereafter, to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate. Is there a motion to go into close?
I'll make the motion to go and close.
We have a first.
I'll second.
We have a second. Let's do a roll call, please.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman?
Aye.
Alderman Pecorelli?
Aye.
Six ayes, no noes. Motion carries. We are slowly going into closed session. You let me know. Good. It's 8:53 PM. Uh, we are on item Gias and George 16. The motion is to continue negotiations with the developer, and then bring back updates as the council is requiring. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
I second.
First and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. G17, a motion in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 Sub 1 Seveas Edward, for competitive and bargaining reasons, to consider the potential acquisition of the property at 9371 West Loomis Road, tax key number 8019995000, 1.565 acres, and the property adjacent thereto, tax key number 8019996-000, 3.629 acres for public services uses and public facilities purposes, and the negotiating of the purchase on, and the investing of public funds with regard to the potential acquisition thereof, and to re-enter open session at the same place thereafter, to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate. Is there a motion?
Motion to close session.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Pecorelli?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderwoman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Six ayes, no noes. Motion carries. We are slowly going into closed session. Uh, you refuse to say it. It's 9:15 PM. We are back in open session regarding G17. The motion is to proceed, uh, with city council and negotiations for the property listed. Sounds good. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
First, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion carries. Moving to item H, miscellaneous licenses. Who's doing that tonight?
I got it.
Uh, Mr. Craig, you've got the floor, sir.
Thank you, sir. Uh, licensing committee met this evening. All three members were there, and...
Wow.
Went through every item on the, the agenda. So, starting with page 544, uh, all applicants were, were recommended for approval, with the exceptions of, uh, Berger and Engelmann were, need to update their application. On page 545, all are recommended for approval, with, uh, Operator Steve's needs to also update their application. Page 546, uh, all are recommended for approval, with the new operator and renewal for the Haragies needs to also update their application. Uh, page 547, all are recommended for approval, with Operators Corona and Fifark need to update their applications. Uh, page 548, the first operator needs to have their background check rerun, uh, miss their maiden name on the, uh, on the application process. However, all are recommended for approval. That will carry over into page 549. Do you?
Um, I, I know we talked to the police department about that. When we run the background check, it will bring over. If we run their maiden name, it will come over, um, who didn't run, but I'll double check with that again, but...
Okay.
It comes up as previous, previous, previous. Sometimes people get married multiple times and say it's previous, previous.
But it didn't have anything under, because typically, we see the second. But on page 549, all are recommended for approval, with Planton and Radke that also need to update their application. Uh, page 550, all operators are recommended for approval, with no one needing to update their application on that page. And for the last three items, the change of agents for the Walgreens has been recommended for approval. And then the St. Martin's of Tours concert needs to be informed of the decibel limit needs to be in line with municipal code. Uh, they had put on their application that, a request of 100 decibels for their show. However, it needs to be in line with, uh, 50 decibels, considering it will be at, their end time is 8:30 on a Sunday night. And that is all from licensing. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Craig?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman?
Aye.
Alderman Pecorelli?
Aye.
Six ayes, no noes. Motion carries. Going on to eyes and Ida vouchers and payrolls. Three points. This will also be a roll call. City vouchers within any date of June 12, 2025, in the amount of $2,019,759.93. Point two, payroll dated June 13, 2025, in the amount of $470,259.38, and payments of the various payroll deductions in the amount of $263,890.62, plus city matching payments. And point three, estimated payroll dated June 27, 2025, in the amount of $476,000, and payments of the various payroll deductions in the amount of $625,000, plus city matching payments. Is there a motion? Move to approve.
Second.
First and second. This is a roll call.
Alderman Pecorelli?
Aye.
Alderwoman Ickman?
Aye.
Alderman Hassan?
Aye.
Alderwoman Day?
Aye.
Alderman Salus?
Aye.
Alderman Craig?
Aye. Six ayes, no noes. Motion carries.
Can I, I'm sorry.
Madam clerk, you've got the floor.
I just want to make sure. So, 50 decibels for the St. Martin's. That's what you guys voted on?
Not, not 50. City ordinance.
79.
50. He said 70. Because that, it goes to 8:30 is when it ends, so that... Okay, hold on. We need some clarification. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Mr. Craig, you've got the floor. If you can give clarification, then we'll have it in an order.
It was for the city ordinance, which was in the, there was email, uh, from planning that laid out what the decibel limits are during certain periods of the day. And that's where I was going off of, and I thought it was 50.
Yeah. That's what was in the, in the email.
UDO? In the UDO?
Yes.
Okay. Because the only thing is, is when I talked to the police department, they can't enforce the UDO. They have to enforce a municipal ordinance. So that's why I need a number.
Up to 79.
So, hold on. So now we have a conundrum. While you're contemplating, Alderwoman, you've got the floor.
It's a one-and-a-half hour Christian concert.
Doesn't matter. Decibels. It's all about the decibel, as we've learned.
And they're not the first app, they're not the first applicant to put down 100. It's just simply an oversight, as the applicant doesn't know what is allowed and what isn't.
But we have to clarify that for the applicant.
We do. Yeah, because we have to put it on the permit, so, so the police department knows.
So, if we are going to city ordinance, counselor?
Then we have to look it up.
Well, I just want to make sure that we are all set, that there's no discrepancy. Or we, is if we're stuck here, we just make it sure that it's compliant with current city ordinance.
But when I talked to Officer Stowers this afternoon, he said they need a, a, a number.
Which would be consistent with the current city ordinance. And I understand what you're saying, but whatever that would be, if we cannot bring it up right now, that's what would be a reasonable solution, was that it would be in accordance with the City of Franklin current city ordinance on noise.
Right, but I think that those numbers he's talking about are in the UDO and not in the municipal code.
And the numbers that would be enforced would be the numbers that are in the municipal code. Are we getting anywhere, ladies? If not, that's what I think would be the most. To say something's in accordance with the municipal code is what's reasonable. To say something's in accordance with the municipal code is what's reasonable.
Yeah, I think it's in the UDO, but, because I had this discussion today with the police department. Something that we have to try to change is municipal code, so there's a definite, because he said they can't issue citations. If it's in the UDO, it has to be in the municipal code.
Correct, because you want to, you know, write the citation.
There is no set number. The chart that's in the UDO is not in the municipal.
It was institutional, I one or I.
So it's fifty from seven AM to ten PM.
Okay.
Okay? At the property line. All right? Excellent. That's been handled. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
First.